Okay, we're called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 18th, 2022. I ask that you all rise for brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet as a council, we are saddened by the news of the past week with the loss of life of one of our city employees, John Kennedy, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon his family and those around him, and we are going to miss him very much, and I'll talk a little bit more about him a little bit later, but I just wanted in the prayer to ask that he be remembered as somebody who really, in his heart and mind, always tried to do what was in the best interest of Batavia and to the citizens of Batavia. So we are very sorry for that situation to have occurred. Also, tonight, I want to make a special blessing on the Batavia community as we go forth after we've just been through some kind of wild and willy times the last few weeks with weather and with other issues that we've had to deal with, and we've watched from a distance some of our neighboring communities be victims of gun violence, and we are ever mindful of the many troubling times that face the world around us, and we ask that a special blessing be shown on all those who have been impacted by these dreaded circumstances. Tonight, we ask for direction and vision and understanding as the council goes about their business, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each and every one of these men and women, they are here to do what is in the best interest of Batavia today and in the future. And we also want to ask for a blessing tonight on all those from Batavia and from throughout our nation who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that they be given a special understanding as they go about their vital missions. So tonight, we thank you for all the good things that the world has on a positive nature, and we will seek to create a world where more things positive are happening than negative. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Alderman Miller, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it's our.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rizzato.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman. Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Sarone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Thirteen present, Your Honor.
That's a record reflect that we have thirteen present, one absent, so we obviously have the necessary corum to conduct business. Item four, the reminder to ask everyone if you're going to address this tonight to speak into the microphone so that you can be heard, and as you know, it is all being recorded on BATV for playback recordings in the weeks ahead. Moving then to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman, Chanset, as Governmental Services Chairman, do you have anything?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Okay, does anybody in the council? All right, moving then to item number six, which is the Consent Agenda. Alderman Chanset, as Governmental Services Chairman, would you present this, please?
Your Honor, the Consent Agenda reads as follows: To accept and place and file the Committee of the Whole minutes for May 24th, 2022; Building reports for June 2022; Approvals for July 8th, 2022 payroll in amount of $965,659.06. The council payable check register in amount of $3,985,642.96. City Council minutes for July 5th, 2022. Approval: Cow Executive Session minutes for May 17th, 2022, and May 24th, 2022. Resolution 22-71-R, accepting a plat dedication of Morton Street. Resolution 22-76-R, approving a preliminary final plat of subdivision for 950 West Wilson Subdivision. Resolution 22-70-R, authorizing Task Order Number 10 with Baxter and Woodman for GIS collection of stormwater in amount not to exceed $26,239. Resolution 22-75-R, authorizing execution contract for the 2022 Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Replacement Program with Builders Paving LLC in amount not to exceed $1,977,800, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Adopt I dot resolution to appropriate $1.6 million from the state MFT fund. Ordinance 22-15, mending municipal code related to employee appointments. Resolution 22-60-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Polco and a National Research Center to administer the national community survey for the city of Batavia. Resolution 22-72-R, authorizing execution of contract with Rouchy and Sullivan. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second. Chanset, second by Wolf, for the approval of the Consent Agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Sarone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved for the approval of the Consent Agenda. Okay, moving to item seven, which are matters for the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish to address us tonight? Yeah, I'm told we have somebody online.
Yes, sir. Bill McGrath?
Bill McGrath, are you on? Can you hear us?
I am. I can hear you very well. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Terrific. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Bill McGrath. I live at 407 Elm Street. I'm a 44-year resident of this community. I raise my children here, I have grandchildren here, and I worked here for the city for 18 years in this community that I dearly love. The city doesn't have a reputation for violence. We're a peaceful place. Our police are very talented in maintaining the peace, as well as being compassionate, and very good at finding people help when they need help following an incident. The city of Naperville, a home-rule community just like Batavia, is considering an ordinance banning the sale of large magazines and semi-automatic weapons. I'm not going to go into any details, but I have no problem with the fact that, right now, the law states that a community like us cannot ban the possession of such weapons, but I do believe we have the power to ban the sale of those. I'm here tonight just to ask the mayor and the city council to please consider a discussion on that, and being a leader in the Fox Valley, and challenge all the other communities or home-rule communities in this state to do the same. As I said, I'm not going to go on about guns. I want to be really simple here. I just don't want ever to hear that violence started with the purchase of such a weapon or magazines in this town that we all love. That's all I have to say. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Do we have any reaction from the council?
Interested in having that discussion.
I suppose the way this would have to run would be we would put it on the Committee of the Whole Agenda for a couple meetings now, when probably tomorrow night was too soon to, I would think, you shouldn't let a little news get out about it and then allow it to have the discussion. I, you know, know some of the officials in Naperville, and I certainly can talk with them and find out what they think the political sense of this is in their town, too. This is a real sensitive issue, and there's, I think we have to make sure that the city attorney is right here with us and can give us some research on some of this, so maybe you guys may want to take a look at what you think is doable here and not doable, and be in a position to give us a report when we bring it up at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
We can discuss it. We can put that on the agenda and have a discussion.
Okay. As I say, I think to do it tomorrow night would be too soon, but maybe next week or the week after would be okay. But in the meantime, I think we should ask, you know, as I just did, ask the city attorney to give us a review of what they think we can do and not do, and what the council's powers are when it comes to an issue like this. All right. Very good. I think we don't need anything further than that then at the moment. Thank you, Bill, for bringing that up. Okay, moving to item eight, which is the Main Street Report, and our Main Street Director is here.
Hi, it's been a busy month for Main Street. We're busy getting ready for our big fundraising event, which is Cocktails in the Park this Saturday, so anybody who's interested in going, let me know. We also have Dinner Table, which is resuming after a two-year hiatus on August 7th. We still need lots of volunteers for that, so anybody who's interested, let me know. Miris and Paljoys both opened in the last month, and from that, it created, as well as the other openings and closings in the second quarter, about 17,000 square feet of vacant space was filled in downtown Batavia, adding 76 part-time jobs and nine full-time jobs in our downtown. Our kiosk project, I don't know if you've seen outside, the kiosk, the directories have been installed, and we also have our tear-away maps that we just got in, and this is what it looks like on this side. I can give everybody one, and then the directory on this side, so we'll start distributing those to the downtown businesses. And just been busy. Farmer's Market's still going well, Boardwalk shops well. That's about it.
Alderman.
If somebody were interested in going to this wonderful event, Saturday evening, Cocktails in the Park, how would they get tickets?
Just visit our website, downtownbatavia.com, and click on the events, and it will take you straight to where tickets can be purchased. That's the same with Dinner Table as well.
Any other comments or questions of the Main Street Director?
Did anybody want a tear-away map?
I guess.
I'm good. Don't worry about me.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item number nine, which is approval of a Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street's Community Dinner Table.
Mayor, I'm going to step up.
Alderman Beck is going to recuse herself.
I move we approve Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Street's Community Dinner Table.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Sarone and second by Chanset for the Community Dinner Table, the event of Batavia Main Street. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sarone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Okay, motions approved. Okay, moving to 10, which is Ordinance 22-36, annexing 37W 330 McKee Street. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, thank you. In our quest to get all the little donut holes, islands, whatever you want to call them, the unannexed parts of the city that are surrounded by the city proper, this is one of those, and this is along McKee Street, where we have the new development going on. Right now, this is the area where the cell towers are, so this would be just that one small area. Really nothing big about it. It was just that part of the property was left out of the development agreement for that area. Does anybody have any questions or any comments? Not, I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 2236, annexing 37 West 330 McKee Street.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of Ordinance 22-36, annexing 37W 330 McKee Street. Any discussion? I would just like to say that I would really encourage us to do this. This thing is, if it's not done, we're going to have a little island sitting out there with the city of Batavia totally surrounding it, and we've had these situations before, and things happen, police calls, or other things that happen, and the city's powers to act are somewhat restricted, so I just think it's good that we can incorporate and include and enclose all these loose areas and bring them into Batavia, and under Mr. Buning's leadership in the Community Development Office, we've done already a bunch of these in other parts of the region, but this one I definitely think needs to be brought into the city. Anybody else? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Sarone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion for Ordinance 2236 is approved, 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Moving to item number 11, which is Ordinance 22-35, annexing 3332 and 342 Evergreen Drive and 1017 and 1033 Walnut Street. Alderman Wolf?
Yes, this is, again, another one of the little islands, actually my backyard, behind my house, and around to the west of my neighbor's property, to the west of me, so this is just another one of those as we take care of all the ones that are unannexed, so this is, those properties along Evergreen and Walnut. I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 2235, annexing 332 and 342 Evergreen Drive and 1017 and 1033 Walnut Street.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of Ordinance 2235, annexing 332 and 342 Evergreen Drive and 1017 and 1033 Walnut Street to the city of Batavia. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Sarone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to 12, which is Ordinance Resolution 22-077-R, approving Batavia Small Business Saturday Video Series 2022. Who's got this one?
So this is Government Services, but I am going to ask for some help from staff on this one.
Anthony, is you going to run this?
Yes, I am, Mayor. All right, so just a little bit of a background here. The city of Batavia, we collaborate with Main Street and the Chamber to basically encourage shopping local in Batavia, supporting our mom-and-pop businesses, small businesses, and, again, I stress the word "local," so it's encouraging people to do such that. So what we have is a thing called Shop Small Saturdays, and, again, like I mentioned before, is shopping local throughout the year. What we're looking to do is basically have the city, Main Street, and the Chamber conduct the Batavia Small Business Saturday Video Series for this year. This will require the production to create about a 15- to 30-second video for up to 40 of our small businesses in Batavia. Each one of the videos will feature an interview and a B-roll of each of the businesses. In addition, these videos will premiere in the weeks leading up to Small Business Saturday in November 2022 of this year. This will offer an opportunity to promote early so that we can ensure that a greater turnout of people come out to support the Batavia businesses in droves. You know, one of the things we understand is our small businesses, our mom-and-pop shops are the backbone to the community. All of our businesses are important, but our small businesses have a critical role in being involved directly in a community, building relationships with our consumers, building relationships with our intergovernmental bodies, but they're oftentimes more involved in a community with a more intimate way. So what we're looking at here is basically an estimated cost to not exceed $10,000, but here's where the council has to make a decision with this particular way of covering a cost. You could either use the remaining Economic Development Grant Funds to cover the cost for this video series, or you can use the ARPA funds that have been set aside by way of staff to fund this particular opportunity here. We do have all the listings that the pre-production covers, the production as well as the post-production, so basically, we're just, you know, recommending approval for Batavia Small Business Saturday Video Series for this year. If anybody has any questions.
Alderman Sarone?
Just, does staff have a recommendation of which fund would, is there a limitation on either one that we better, if we could use both, let's use the one that is more limited?
Laura's about to address that for you. Alderman Sarone?
In my opinion, I think it would be better to use the Economic Development Grants Funds because there are certain strings attached to the ARPA funds in certain ways that we need to communicate about the way that we're using those funds, and so, in my mind, I had thought that perhaps at some later date, we'd come up with some specific programs that we might put out there to assist businesses who are recovering from the pandemic, and so I think it would be cleaner and easier at this point to use the Economic Development Grant, because that is just general fund money.
Okay, I have a question.
Will the videos and the product that we get from this, will those be available to
the businesses so they can use them on their own websites, their own social media, however they want to use those, the B-rolls, so that they can use that themselves?
Yes. They will own that, and in fact, we would love to see them utilize that in other ways beyond using it just for, in fact, so this is sort of a replica of a program that we did for Restaurant Madness, which was really successful, but we learned some things about ways to, you know, promote it even more, you know, if the individual businesses were to be able to utilize that in the future, so that's definitely part of this.
And that's what I wanted to see, is I wanted to make sure that those businesses would be able to use that, there would be no restriction to them having the footage, use it however they wanted for their own internal promotions, or anything they wanted to do to be able to use that, because I think a lot of the businesses, one, don't have the funds, don't have the experience with trying to set that up or do any of that on their own, and this might be a really good way to get them more involved in that, so that they can use that type of, you know, media to reach out to people that they might not otherwise get to.
Alderman Wolf, and I'm glad you brought that up, because with Restaurant Madness, with those videos being shown, I got many calls, and people stopped me in the streets saying how important it was to be able to see exactly what these businesses do from a video perspective, so, you know, even though the community is well aware of a lot of businesses that are out there, it really helped to draw more people to the businesses and to be excited about the businesses, so I thought that was a really great feature, and I agree with you, Alderman Wolf, that this would be awesome to see the businesses be able to use for their own PR.
Great.
Alderman?
Yeah, I like the idea of it. I think the numbers that came out of Restaurant Madness were decent. Hopefully, we can do even more, and, again, getting it out early, I think, is going to help. I would like to see if the businesses are using it somehow, that we can continue to track the hits on those videos across whatever platform they're put on, so that we can see, are we actually making a difference? Is this, what changes are we doing, and are they spreading and getting more views, or are we losing viewership, or whatever it is, because we can't just, obviously, just keep on throwing money at everything, and there has to be a benefit to what we're doing as well. Thank you, Alderman Yor.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd make a motion, we approve Resolution 22-77-R, approving Batavia Small Business Saturday Video Series 2022. Any further discussions? Kirk, call the roll.
Sarone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Thank you, Council. Thank you. Okay, moving to item 13, which is Resolution 22-073-R, authorizing the mayor to sign the official response letter to the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County. Who's got this one?
I have this, Your Honor.
Alderman Sarone?
Thank you. We reviewed this at the Cow last week, and this is a letter in response to the League of Women Voters regarding Prairie State and the studies coming out of U of I, and the letter just kind of, it's not, there's no action behind it, other than explaining our response and our limited ability to respond and whatnot, and clarified some information on it, so this is just a letter responding, and it was pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any comments? Abby?
Yeah, I would just express my gratitude to the League of Women Voters for keeping engaged on this topic and keeping track of it so closely and staying so well-informed and bringing these concerns back to us, because I think that's really important, and I think better engagement on Prairie State would have gone a long way a long time ago, but now, you know, we'll do what we can with what we have, and so I'm just really thankful that they're still involved, still active, engaged.
And I agree with that, and it's great. I know Gary's coming back to us with some more information, so it keeps us in the forefront and keeping us on it, so, anybody else have anything? Anyone online? With that, I would make a motion to pass Resolution 2273-R, authorizing the mayor to sign an official response letter to League of Women Voters of Central Kane County.
Second. Move by Alderman Sarone, second by Alderman Malley, for the approval of Resolution 22-073-R, authorizing the mayor to sign the official dash zero seven three dash R, authorizing the mayor to sign the official response letter to the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County. Any further discussion? Kirk Hall, roll.
Serrone?
Aye.
Vogel singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion is approved by a vote of thirteen yes, no, no's one absent. Okay, moving to fourteen, which is Administrator's Report. Laura?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is the next quarterly update. It says most recent update, four of 2022, that should say, seven of 2022, but I'm pretty excited to share with you, there's been some significant work done on the items which are part of our 2021 to 2023 Strategic Action Plan. Just a reminder, these are the various areas in which we've identified objectives. And while in previous iterations of giving this presentation, there was a lot of very tiny print to read, I've put in a little bit of a different format, which I hope will help people to better understand and be able to follow the progress that's being made. So the first was the hiring of a business development manager and to create an economic development strategic plan. That first part of that was completed with the hiring of, actually, we call it Economic Development Manager, and so Shannon has been with us for about a year now. And now we're making progress on the creation of our Economic Development Strategic Plan. In the past quarter, we held three stakeholder meetings, one with Main Street, one with the Chamber, and one with a cross-section of members from various parts of our community to get feedbacks on the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And this information now will be compiled and brought back to City Council for a discussion on whether we have the sufficient information to move forward with the creation of objectives, or if additional work needs to be done on that. So we'll be working on that in the next quarter, as well as the actual development of the objectives. And then also actively marketing Batavia to new businesses. Local businesses have been featured in a variety of communication channels. Our new communications manager has done a really great job of reaching out to and establishing contacts with counterparts and other organizations within our community to publicize Batavia as an exciting place to do business. And then promoting opportunities for downtown redevelopment. We issued RFPs for four downtown development sites, which were published, and responses are due by the end of July. The city continues to work with the developer who's proposing a mixed-use development on the west side of downtown. And then many of you were involved this evening in a meeting with Housiel Levine. They're a firm which has been hired to assist the city with creating a downtown plan that will provide developers with what the City Council's vision is for future development. And continuing to implement aspects of the Streetscape Plan. In May, the council discussed using TIF One funds as a source for the cost of putting catenary lights in on North River Street as another amenity and accent there. And then also, the city issued an RFP for two entryway signs to be installed on the north and south ends of Batavia Avenue. This is sort of the ongoing progress report that is part of the online version of this presentation, and so people can come here and download this and blow it up, so that if they wanted to check back to see what the progress over time was, this was in 2021, this is 2022 up to current. The next section of our plan addresses transportation objectives. We're continuing to pursue implementation of a road diet on Route 31. We received back our consultant's report that showed that a road diet on Route 31 is feasible. We've submitted that to IDOT. Unfortunately, due to a backlog of work in their offices, they notified us that it was going to take about six weeks to review this information and provide a response. If IDOT does determine that the road diet is feasible, the next step in the plan is to begin the engineering work on planning that. And if everything goes smoothly, it could be being implemented as soon as the beginning of the construction season in 2024. We had an objective to add X miles of charros or bike lanes per year. There are a few items in this report that you will see that kind of got rolled up into our active transportation plan. So we fully expect that the active transportation plan will have objectives that are related to the things that we're talking about here. And that plan is due to be completed before the end of the year, hopefully in time so that we can utilize it to have discussions for the 2023 budget where we can implement several of these measures. Next is to collaborate with Batavia Bicycle Commission on Development of an Active Transportation Plan, and, no pun intended, this is really rolling forward nicely. We had additional stakeholder meetings in the second quarter, and Active Transportation Alliance came here to Batavia, and we walked all over town to study the areas of concern. A second meeting of the Steering Committee was held this month, and then they are going to present preliminary recommendations to the City Council in August. Infrastructure. As far as developing an infrastructure funding policy, last year, last summer, Gary put together the plan for near-term, middle-term, and long-term infrastructure projects, some of the near-term and potentially middle-term objectives that are part of that list, had potential funding sources identified and others didn't. In the second quarter, we did have a discussion, as TIF One will expire at the end of 2024, how we might utilize some of the increment that is generated within that TIF to address some infrastructure issues, such as the catenary light project on North River Street, riverbank stabilization, remodeling City Hall, and the one-way conversion of North River Street. Enhancing the safety of bikers and walkers in our neighborhoods, again, is something that we'll have recommendations that are part of the Active Transportation Plan, but there is funding for traffic calming measures included in the 2022 budget. But those may be pushed forward to 2023, or if we are able to accomplish those within the current year, we'll try to do so. The next are the objectives focused on the river, creating a master plan for the development of our riverfront. The Park District has engaged Hitchcock Design Group for an amendment to the project, and so our project has hit a pause while that project is being conducted, and the Park District expects that they'll be ready to meet with City Council following receipt of that project's result, again, in September or October of this year. Actively marketing our riverfront development opportunities, again, you know, we did publish that RFP for the four city-owned downtown properties, and we are working with a developer of a privately-owned riverfront property on the proposed mixed-use development. And also, hiring the consultants is also furthering this objective. Identifying inexpensive ways to capitalize on having a river in the heart of our downtown. The City of Batavia, as well as some other organizations within our community, plan to participate in our Fox River, which is a river cleanup event that is being held on September 17th, 2022. So we'll do all that we can to promote that and seek volunteer from the community on this great project to cooperate in a wonderful river cleanup. And you'll find, I hope you'll come out and help us, because you'll find some amazing things in the river, things you never would have thought. I think they found a wagon wheel last year, which is pretty exciting. And then also, our fifth area is diversity, and we wanted to create, adopt a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. And where we're at right now is that we formed a Workplace DEI Group. We've met twice, and at our next meeting in July, we'll be working together on creating mission and vision statements for this group. A really exciting thing is that we have an application pending for the Metropolitan Council of Mayor's DEI Steering Committee has created a pilot project, a six-month pilot project, that provides education and technical assistance for operationalizing DEI. And this is so helpful to us, being at the beginning of our journey of creating our own plan. And so, haven't heard word yet if our application has been accepted, but we are certainly hopeful to become part of that pilot project. And that's the update. Does anybody have any questions about the strategic plan?
Alderman Yor?
Laura, on the road diet, so six weeks from when? When did they get?
Rahat is activating his microphone. It was mid-June. So we're probably about one month in.
So, we...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we received comment, actually, this afternoon, I haven't shared with Laura, so it came literally at 3:00 PM. We'll be looking through the report, but initial read tells us that they are open to the road diet concept. One of the things that they said they would prefer not to have one lane or two lanes in each direction through the downtown area. So they want from Wilson to Main to remain as it is. So we are going to look through that report more. They have asked for some additional data, so we are going to provide all that. So we'll be scheduling a meeting with the consultant, Gary and myself, talk about all those next week, and respond to that initial comment that they have provided.
Thank you.
Rahat, is there anything we can do to help? Kind of feel like at some point, it'll probably be a... Get stuff happening, so is there anything we can do?
As I said, I just brushed through the report or the response, I didn't really read it that deeply, but our first reaction would be to convince them to do it through the downtown between Wilson and Main also. But see, they might ask us to do some additional report and all that, or additional data. So if it comes to that political hammer, we'll probably, you know, come back to you and ask for that.
Thank you. Alderman Wolf?
No.
Did you? Oh, okay, thought I saw your hand up.
I'm just happy with the response.
Yes, right? Very encouraging. I'm so glad to hear that we received that report. If there are no other questions, I just have one other thing that I would like to announce. As we know, our police chief will be retiring in September, and that Sean Maza has been selected to follow him as our Chief of Police, and we conducted interviews and have selected Watch Commander Mike Johnson has been selected to fill the vacant role of Deputy Chief of Police. Mike has been with the department for many, many years and in leadership positions, and he's both highly respected within the department and within our community. Mike couldn't be here today, and so we will bring him to another future meeting to be introduced to the community as their next deputy chief with the changes that will be coming in September. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to the next item is fifteen committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Wolf?
Not really a report, just an update, so everybody remembers that we are going to fewer COW meetings now opposite each City Council meeting, so just be ready for more things on the agenda each meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
City Services, Alderman Risotto?
Yes, nothing to report at this time, Your Honor.
Okay. Government Services, Alderman Chanzet?
Uh, no reports.
Public Utilities, Alderman Serrone?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. We have other business from the council tonight? All right, going to the mayor's report. As I said during my opening prayer, I just want to say a couple more words about the career of John Kennedy and his work as the Engineering Assistant in the Batavia Public Works Arena. John was one of those people who, I think, number one, very strongly understood his job and how to do it, and goodness knows the number of times I've seen him crawl into trenches or holes or whatever to look at pipe and wire and poles and just about everything. And, you know, I think the proof is in the past as far as the good job that he did. We don't have a lot of problems with things like that, because as they're being installed and they're inspected, John was always there for us. And the other side of John was, is that as he moved around the town, he would run into people that, specifically senior citizens, that had something going wrong in their house or their backyard. I know specifically of a situation where a lady called and told me what he had done. She had, he had come over there to look at a pipe in her backyard, and she said, "No, Ma, I'm having a hard time going up and down these stairs because a stair rail fell off." Well, she said the next thing she knew about five o'clock that night, John Kennedy appears at her doorstep with a hammer and nails, and he proceeds to reinstall the rail better than it had ever been there before. And he got done and put the hammer and nails in his work box and left. And she said, you know, "He didn't charge me anything." I said, "Well, you know..." She says, "No, I wanted to pay him, and he wouldn't..." So she says, "Boy, the City Services of Batavia are really super when they'll come after their off-duty and work on you." So I just use that as an example of what this guy was all about, and, you know, he had a pretty big heart of gold about him, and he would step forward when people were in need or needed support, and no questions asked, and he was there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And just by the reaction that happened last Thursday night, when he had his unfortunate accident that killed him, the number of people I then talked with in the next 24 hours was significant, and everybody was crying and very upset and dismayed that this had happened, because he was, as one told me, "He was one of the really good guys in Batavia who really understood the community and just went about his business, and his business was to make Batavia a greater and grander and nicer place than he had found it when he first got here." And they said, you know, "He obviously succeeded." So certainly to John's family, I'm sure the members of the council join with me in expressing our great regret and our condolences on his loss, and it's a loss that we are going to feel for many years to come because of having his knowledge and background. But he served Batavia very well, he made a difference, and he made this world a much better place than he found it by just his actions on a day-to-day basis of just helping his fellow mankind. So John will be greatly missed by many of us, and he is somebody that truly did make a difference in the world of Batavia. That being said, the next thing I just want to share with you is that all of you are aware that on the Fourth of July this year, we got a little bit of a challenging situation thrown at us, in the fact that our Citizens Committee had gone out and once again raised the $40,000 necessary to put on that fireworks show. It was going to be at, or was at Batavia, at Engstrom Park out there across the street from Batavia High School. And we brought in this fireworks gentleman, and he had gone out into the Mooseheart Field and had dropped all his wire on the ground and got his computer all ready and was getting all things ready to go. And as you know, we had had that very unfortunate incident up in Highland Park that day at the shooting at the parade, and about 12 o'clock or so after the shooting, there began a real run of towns that were announcing they were canceling their Fourth of July activities. And they started up on the north shore around Highland Park, and then they started other towns further in Cook County, and even in northern Kane County, a couple of them said, "Well, we're just going to not do this because of this." Well, I already, we already had the fireworks in the ground waiting to be fired, and if we'd said, "No, we don't want to do it," that guy would have had to gone back out and spent, out in the dark out there, trying to pull the fireworks back out of the ground, and then I'm sure we would have had another charge to come back and do it on another day and another time. But beyond that, I was most concerned, and we started having discussions at the staff level with myself as to what we should do. And I was told the City of Aurora was going to go ahead and fire their fireworks, and so I made a call down there and confirmed that that was the case. Then I got a call from the Mayor of St. Charles, and she was telling me that they telling me that they were going to cancel their fireworks. And they did. And I guess they're going to fire them the first of September or something, I guess around Labor Day. But then Batavia was kind of in between the two. And, you know, I looked at the number, I drove around town as I was having these conversations, and I was looking at the number of Batavia homes, where there was a lot of cars sitting there, and people had invited their relatives and friends in from goodness knows where to come to their house and have a celebration of our nation's birthday, and then go to the fireworks in Batavia. I knew that was the routine that we were here. And to suddenly then announce at 5:00 at night that we were going to cancel it after these people had come from wherever, I was having a hard time with that. So thanks to some connections I have in Chicago, and because of our ESDA agency, I was able to make a phone call and talk directly to the U.S. Weather Bureau in Chicago. And I talked to the guy in there that was running things, and I told him who I was. And he said, he knew where Batavia was. And so I said, "Well, can you tell me, are we going to have a storm in Batavia between now and, say, 11:00 tonight, which would have been after the fireworks?" He says, "Give me a second." And he says, "I'm going to go look at the radar." And he says, "Well, of course, in the Weather Bureau, you never can make a total prediction that what you're saying is going to be right." But he says, "From what I can see, the wind volumes and the directions of things are going," he says, "I would tell you, my bet would be that you will not have a rainstorm of any magnitude in Batavia till at least 11:30 tonight." And he says, "There's going to be some stuff north of you, and you may get another fireworks show of your own if your people are sitting there about 9:30, because they may see some lightning pretty heavy to the northern sky." Well, for those of you who are out there, you saw that lightning that they were... But he says, "There's a line there, and there seems to be some holdup, and that line is moving directly east." So he says, "I think it's going to go through northern McHenry and Lake County and not come down to Batavia." So he says, "If I was you, I'd go ahead and do it." So I made the decision. I get the credit or the blame, probably blame in the minds of many people, that we went ahead and fired it. But I really think it was the right thing to do, because, number one, we got it over with. All of our city departments then didn't have to worry about coming back for a second night. The guys that had laid out all that work on the cornfield out there to fire the fireworks, they got to do it and wrap it up and go home. And we started the show at exactly 9:30, and at 10:05, it was over with. And the rainstorm didn't come till about 11:40 is when it started to rain. So everybody was gone. Everything was great. The Batavia Park District had their staff come in the next day and do a cleanup of the fields, and everything was put away. And at the end of the day, we've got a nice little kitty to begin next year's show, because we had enough people show up at the farm, at the field out there, that we did get a pretty good take of donations from folks at the show that night. I'm told where we really missed out was, we should have been out in the parking lots on Randall Road from Main Street up to Fabian, because those were pretty full of people with cars. Everybody was sitting there watching the show with the idea that maybe it was going to rain, and they could jump in the car and go home. But that's the story of this year's fireworks. And this was the 71st time out of 72 years that Batavia's fired a fireworks show. Every one of them has been paid for entirely by donations, and we've never gone into the city budget or city finances to pay for fireworks in 72 years. And the one year, we did have to cancel it because of the COVID thing. That was two years ago, along with everybody else. But we've had 71 shows, and it seems to be a big hit. After it was over with, I stood there, and I had a lot of people tell me, "Great show, Mayor. You guys really did a nice job again." And, you know, we had, you know, we had the community band there, and they played. And we had a bunch of vendors there selling hot dogs and various items of food. And they all told me they did very well. So everybody that participated seemed to be very happy, and it came together very well. But thank goodness, I had the U.S. Weather Bureau I could talk to directly, and they told me they think it's going to be okay. So sometimes they tell you, "Don't believe the government." But on that one, I thought confident enough, they weren't going to, if it was any danger, they would have suggested it to me. So I'm pleased that we got that all taken care of, and it's over with. But I just want everybody to know that that is what happened that night, and we got it all over with. And the final thing I just want to say is, is that in the last couple of weeks, our city departments have really had a lot of work. I mean, just a lot of emergency stuff's come down. We've had a lot of, you know, yesterday, we had a car-bus accident over at McKee and Van Ortrick. And nobody got hurt, but they managed to take down an electric pole with the bus. And that was a comm ed pole, but it also impacted our electric, so we had our people out there. And, you know, the Public Works has had several water main breaks and other things going on, and they're there 24 hours a day doing what they should do. And certainly, the other heroes in the room are certainly the Batavia Police and Fire Departments. And both of them have had an inordinate amount of activity. It's been, I think, on the Fire Department's side, we've had, there's never been a day here in the last three or four weeks, maybe since Chief Hanson assumed command, that we haven't had at least 12 calls a day. Some days were up to 20. And we're just, and a lot of it, most of it, a lot of it is the ambulance. We're running the wheels off the ambulance. But they are going. And then certainly, the Police Department, a lot of what they do, they can't talk about. It can't be put in the newspaper. But one thing I will tell you in reading some of the reports is that, and I guess this is where I want to end this, Batavia seems to be targeted by people who want to commit crime on the computer or the technology world. And we have had several crimes in this town in the last six weeks, where senior citizens of Batavia, some of them pretty prominently known, got targeted and were victims of losing several thousand dollars in several instances, and one in which a citizen lost multiple thousands of dollars. And it was all somebody getting on and telling her, "Oh, I'm checking your credit card number or your Visa number or something. And let's review with, give me the number again so I can make sure that I got..." And they bought it and gave it, and then right away, they get their credit card cleaned up. So the Batavia Police has just been phenomenal on this. And I've had several of these people who have had this experience call and tell me what a good job the Batavia Police have done in trying to work on it. And I know we have a staff up there in the daytime that probably spends most of their time just dealing with crime on the computer. But that's kind of the way of the world now, and we're not unique here. This is, everybody's coming in here trying to hit that. And where the vulnerability seems to be is people my age in the senior citizen world who probably never had any computer training in school. I never saw a computer in any time. I graduated from Batavia High School in 1967, and there were no computers in the school at that point in time. So I know my classmates, many of them feel the same way, that, you know, just don't have the training or the background. And some of these folks become really wide-open victims of this stuff. So I just put that word out and encourage all Batavians to be very careful if you get calls on the phone or letters in the mail, or if you got a computer and somebody contacts you on one of these various sites and says, "Hey, I'm here to, I'm watching out for you. Let me protect you. Give me your numbers," or whatever. You got to be real careful with that stuff, because this happened in this town in the last few weeks. And to the credit of the Batavia Police Department, we've been able to stop some of it and turn some of it around. And so we should be very proud of the men and women we have working for us at all levels of the city government, because they really have stepped up to the challenge here recently. And we've been busy, 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 and I'm afraid that's not going to go away. So we are really getting, you know, we have a good budget for those folks, and we're really getting our money's worth here for what we get for services from all city departments. So I'm very proud of every job that is being done here. And I just feel very, very strong that we are very fortunate to have the people we do. And in some senses, that's one of the sadnesses of John Kennedy's death, in that he was one of those people who helped really make us look good and respond to the citizens. And he's no longer with us, but I'm hopeful there are those in the group that will step forward and pick up his reign and carry forward. So with that, I'm going to end. And Alderman Wolf, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Kirk, why don't you take a voice, Phil?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.